Forty-five P M. Called order a special meeting for the public hearing on the 2024 City of Peru budget. Also, a special meeting, consider resolution eighteen twenty twenty-three for additional appropriation from the special street and sanitation fund number twenty-four oh three.
Do you have preference to which one you do first?
Pardon me?
Do you care which one you do first?
No, it's up to you. Which one do you want to do?
Let's just get Adam up here.
Adam here?
Yeah, he's right there.
There he is. Up and out.
Good evening.
Hey, Adam.
Good evening.
You guys approved a hundred and fifty thousand of the A P R, A R P?
Mm-hmm.
For a truck. W A Jones had stopped by the other day and have a truck that we can purchase and we can get it as soon as November. Linco, we got a quote that we based the hundred and fifty thousand that we asked for off of, and it came to like a hundred and forty-four thousand. If we went with Linco, it could be eighteen months to two years before we got a truck. W A Jones, the truck is... We like it. We like it a little bit more. But it does come in at a hundred and sixty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-five, and that's why we're asking, on top of the hundred and fifty thousand you already approved, we're asking for eleven thousand nine hundred and eighty-five out of our non-reverting account to make up the difference. In doing so, we can get a truck, you know, within a month or so. You want to tell them a little bit of difference in the two trucks that we were looking at?
The truck that we're looking at getting is quite a bit larger. The truck from Linco is a Ford. Cubic yards, capacity is only three point three cubic yards. And this other truck is an International, also has the Cummins engine in it, and will capable of four and a half yards for...
That's a dump bed?
Yeah.
Like how much material can be put in the truck?
It also comes with a little bit heavier plow, so we'll be able to plow the streets a little bit more efficiently.
It's an International?
Yes.
Brian, how many years you think we can get out of this truck?
We're getting twenty years out of trucks we got now.
Yeah, yeah. I'm hoping to get at least ten, fifteen out of it with a lot more use out of it than what we typically would use it for.
Yeah, sounds pretty good.
I mean, that's what we're hoping for. The newer trucks with all the computers, electronics, the more stuff you have on it, the more stuff goes wrong, and it's harder to keep up with them. As far as the old trucks go, it's very little to go wrong, but they do break down a lot, too. So, yeah, we're hoping it lasts quite a while.
Other than plowing, what else would we use the truck for?
You could actually use that particular truck, the way it has a slide-in bed, for salt in the streets. You could also use it for patching. You could actually pull the seal thing we're looking at, maybe get later, to seal the streets. You could also use it to pull the leaf machine if we wanted to. I think it would do that okay.
Pull gravel, asphalt.
Yeah. It's got an air gate where we can actually spread gravel. Lots of different things.
What year is it?
This would be a twenty twenty-four. It is... W A Jones just picked that one up and has already started the conversion on it, because if we didn't get approved, somebody else would. So, we took a chance and hoping we get approved for it.
So if you get approved tonight, you can just call them tomorrow and let them know.
Yep.
Are they going to deliver it then? Would they deliver it, you know?
Yeah.
To the city?
And like I said, the big thing is the have it before this winter versus maybe eighteen months at the earliest. That's crazy.
Yeah. No, you need a lot seen it now.
Yes, for sure, yes.
Ask the public if they have any questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
The guys from your department do have a lot of questions.
They always do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Moving on to the public hearing for the city budget of Peru.
Who's presenting that?
Pardon?
Who's presenting that?
Well, I gave it all to you folks. You've got it in front of you. The budget has been advertised on Gateway per the state requirements on September the first, so that we can stay on timeline with getting the budget approved. Baker Tilly was very happy with the way it was presented. We had two minor changes, the three minor changes that we made after the first run-through with it. If you look at this form with the green highlighter on the front, you'll see that it lists all of the breakdowns for where the money is being spent from. General fund, basically. We have total operating receipts of seven million one thirty-six. We're spending seven million three twenty-eight, but we had a beginning cash balance of four point seven million, and so we are spending about a hundred ninety-two thousand more than we're taking in in the general fund. However, as Amber from Baker Tilly indicated to me, they were very conservative on the income side for the numbers, so it's probably going to go up from what we have on there, but they didn't want to make a wild guess. But it was conservative, and there were a couple of revenue streams that I asked them about, and she said, yeah, we just wanted to keep it low. We think that they will be higher than that they are. Motor vehicle highway, we've got a... We still have three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in that account after the expenditures. Local riding streets will have two thirty-four. The park is a minor decrease in cash, but they wanted a couple of pieces of equipment. That's at seventy-four thousand seven fifty. That's what makes up the majority of the decrease in cash. Aviation had twenty-seven thousand five hundred in building repairs, and I just put the whole lump sum in. When they, when the various department heads gave them to me, I put the whole thing in to see where it would fall out. Fire territory is going to be a positive three fifteen. Fire territory debt, obviously, that's for the fire truck that we're in the process of requiring. American Rescue Plan obviously shows a decrease of eight ninety-five. That's because we're not getting any more money in that account, and we have to spend it. The cash has to be expended by the end of twenty-six, has to be appropriated next year, which the new council administration has the opportunity to do. Debt service is kind of a wash. C C I F, we're getting money in, but no expenditures. C C D, we're going to have a sixty-four thousand positive. Seated, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar positive. Public safety will have a seventy-two thousand nine ninety reduction, but we'll still have a million eight in that. Majority of that reduction is for the in-car cameras that you approved earlier in the year for sixty-eight thousand a year. Metro Fire Fund will still have fifty-nine thousand. Special Streets will still have one forty-five. Continuing education will still have forty-two. Criminal investigation breaks even. Traffic ordinances of forty-two, forty-nine thousand. Fire pension's okay, police pension's okay. And so if you look at the total fund expenditures, the green line, it shows a negative, it shows a decrease in cash for the year of eight hundred and four thousand. But if you remember, on the American Rescue Plan, it's eight ninety-five. So if you take that out, we actually have a positive hundred thousand dollar cash flow for next year. The back three pages then show where we are. We want to be between thirty and, we want to be at least thirty percent cash balances versus the funds and the general fund. We're over fifty percent. Motor vehicle highway, we're about thirty-three percent. Park is over fifty. Aviation is about a third. Public safety lit is over a hundred percent. Seated's over a hundred percent. C C D's a hundred percent. Fire territory's about sixty-some percent. And the very last page then shows the, where the money is coming in from and where it's being expended. The gross property tax accounts for about sixty-seven percent of the income coming into the city. Lit or local income tax is about a third, so that leaves your total funding of thirteen million six thirty-nine. And the expenditures in the green donuts below, you're spending about thirty-seven percent of your money on city operations, thirty-eight percent on public safety, streets eight percent, park four percent, and economic development fourteen percent. The economic development money that's being expended is part of that, is that million dollars that you authorized for the Broadway landing last year. So a couple of these expenditures are already, were things that you spent, that you authorized this year.
Thank you.
The raises for the city employees average, well, they were three, they were three percent with the exception of the fire and the police who got four. There were a couple other little minor changes, but the majority of them got three, and then four percent for the fire and the police. So everybody got raised this year. Nobody was forced to not get anything.
So is the aviation, the airport, is that one of our biggest challenges?
Well, you're never, you're hardly ever going to have that being self-sufficient.
Right.
Because they just don't have enough traffic out there.
Right.
Is that right, Kelly?
Yeah.
Yeah. So you do with what you can. They had some items that they wanted to repair, and I put it in their budget, but it very well could be financed out of the A R P fund next year, so that wouldn't show a negative. Depends on what the next council and the next mayor chooses to do. There was a lot of the, and the majority of the, you've noticed under general, there was three hundred and seventy thousand dollars of debt capital outlays. So that would be something that could possibly be funded over to A R P also, whatever the next council and the next mayor wants to do.
All right. Thank you, Kurt.
I was concerned about the insurance cost. I noticed that they went up almost a couple hundred thousand.
Well, I put, I put ten percent in for health insurance. I thought I'd put the worst-case scenario in. I don't have any idea what it's going to be between now and next April, so I put in about ten percent. I called Terry Smith at Smith Sawyer and asked him what it would be, and he told me approximately three fifty-two. So that's where the, that's where those two, I got quotes from them for those two. I got a quote from Ten Crypto for the I T department, so these numbers came from our vendors.
The last insurance provider was Apex, I believe.
That is who we're still with.
Okay. And I know that, I met with them last year, Steve, and they said there were several things we could do, and I thought one of the things that we talked about, I don't know if you guys did it or not, was they offered to meet with employees and explain all of their benefits and what a big benefit it is.
Yeah, we will do that. We've also got, we're also investigating, we're having Smith Sawyer quote the plan also. They did not provide one, yet they thought that the better thing would be to wait until about November, because you don't want to mess with people's deductibles and things like that. It's time of the year, so the good time to cut it off would be the first of the year. So it is, Apex is the agent, and it's it's United Healthcare is the...
And for everybody that might not know, but that's one of our biggest expenditures. It's one point, was one point six million, and now it's being on the budget for one point, over one point eight for health insurance.
Yeah, so just about fifteen, about fifteen percent of the whole budget goes for health insurance, and the employees do not have to pay a dime for their health insurance. So it's a very, very, very good benefit. You just don't see that anymore.
Right. I paid like seven hundred dollars a month for my health insurance.
Yeah. Plus, we also fund their health, their health savings account, too. So we give them money to help cover the deductibles. So everybody got what they wanted. The only, the only one that I did not fund a hundred percent of requisition, of requests, was for the street department, who wanted seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for trucks. And I figured, okay, I will, I will put one in the budget for next year. I will theoretically put one in A R P, but depending on what the new administration wants to do, and then the third one would be rolled over to twenty-five.
All right. Anything else? If not, I'll close the special meeting at six oh one P M. Called order a regular meeting of the common council, City of Peru, September the eleventh, twenty twenty-three, at six oh one P M. If you would, everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance. Remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Brent Wedding.
[inaudible]
you would bless this administration, the city council, that you would give them wisdom and understanding to make wise choices for our city. Lord, on this September eleventh, we pray for those people that are still living and grieving from the loss of their loved ones on this horrific day, and it reminds us to pray for our own police and firefighters and first responders, that you would keep them safe, that you would bless their families, that you would comfort them, watch over them. Bless this city, the economy, the infrastructure of this city, that you'd prosper the city of Peru. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Anderson.
Here.
Dustin.
Here.
Plotho.
Here.
Ramsey.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Next order, business reading and correcting the journal in the last meeting on August seventh.
I'll make a motion that we dispense with the rules and approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Rule call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Dustin.
Good.
Plotho.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Saeid Ashni.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Before we go in with the council liaison communications, I have a little article here. This is the twenty-second anniversary of nine eleven, and I'd like to ask that everyone keep in mind of this significant day, the day that changed our way of life to as Americans forever. Please keep the families of the victims that lost their life on that tragic day in mind, as they are still dealing with the loss of their loved ones. With that, everyone, keep them within your prayers. We'll start liaisons down at Tom and come this way.
I have nothing to report on.
One thing I have, I just haven't talked to Chief Hawk lately. What are the status on our ambulance?
Basically, it's just on order for two years out.
Is it that far out still?
Yeah.
I didn't know if something got bumped up since you actually put the order in.
They had still put in reference about a month ago. They were looking to try and move it up, but they had some cancellations, but you wouldn't know till November.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I have nothing else.
I have nothing, Mayor. To add.
I just have a follow-up with preutilities. In our, in this past Wednesday's meeting, we discussed, and Mayor, you brought it up to about Born End, and it's a trailer park here in town, that they may be shut off soon. Now, I left a couple messages, but I don't do well on the phone, so, but they are individually metered. Is it possible, if people show that they have been paying the company, that they can be, that their water can stay on?
No, because we don't own those meters. We don't, we don't test those meters. They're not our meters at all. Our meters only at the road.
Okay.
And so we build in customer, end user, so to speak.
Okay.
And we can also shut that off based on their bill, and they are extremely behind. We probably should have shut them off three months ago. We'll be trying to do the best we can to keep those people with water.
Yeah, somebody sent a message to me today and said, what's the real situation? She said, should I get ready to move? And I said, I think so. So anyway, thank you. I was just trying to look for any opportunity to save them that we have. And I know you have, your company has as well, so thank you. That's all I have.
I talked to the dogs, the animal control, earlier today, and they've got five medium dogs still up there looking for its owners. And again, there's five medium-sized dogs at Animal Control. Also, I'd like to thank the city department, city street, for paving the south side Scoop's drive-thru, what needed to be done, and they were able to get that done. East Main Street is now done, or pretty close to being done. Also, west on, west twenty-four, old twenty-four is paved now. I went to Logan's Port the other day, and I thought, what happened? So it is now paved. West twenty-four, old twenty-four is now paved in Miami County. Oh, the incinerator hill a few months ago was paved, but not by the city. But I'd like to let everybody know that Incinerator Hill is now paved, and welcome to Peru, Indiana, with all those pavements of those particular streets and roads. Also, Adam Sheets is going to step down as the head person at the street department, and Brian Stilling is going to be his replacement at this time. And it's, oh, German Street. Josh Chance says everything's going in the right direction. Is that true?
That's correct. It's part of the larger project that we're asking finance for, that is provisioned by now.
Hope to be done maybe by April or something.
We hope to close on that money by April, the whole amount to start the project. Engineering should be at sixty percent by then, and then we'll see if we want to start the project by the end of the year.
Okay. Appreciate it very much. Your turn.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Moving right along. Unfinished business. Ordinance number nineteen dash twenty twenty-three.
I make a motion that we are, oh, okay, Josh is going to do a presentation.
Yeah, you don't have to consider again, right?
We already...
Okay, yeah, that was the last meeting. No, I don't really have a presentation. I just thought I'd, I've got Scott here from Baker Tilly, Lisa Lee from Ice Miller. If you guys have any further questions, why we need this, how it works, what the next steps are, we're here to answer questions.
I just get asked, how much are rates going to go up? That's, and I know that that's kind of a hard question.
Well...
Or answer.
So we're continually looking for other funding sources or grant sources. We, with Scott, Lisa's, Dustin's help, Jamin, our staff's help, and conversations with the I F A, they've given us two and a half million dollars in a forgivable grant or forgivable loan, however you want to call it. It's basically a grant, so that'll go towards the first portion, the forty million dollar, forty-three million dollar first portion of that, that we have to close on by April. So we'll keep scrounging. Hopefully, it changes down, but as it is, as it is now, we'll come back to you hopefully sometime soon with a schedule of, what we're looking at now is four years, twenty-three, or twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, so we can gradually get into the top of where we need to be to fund it as far as our rates go. And within the next month or two, I think we'll be in front of you again for the rates, so we can get, get that in place and pay for the funding. Any other questions? Like I said, Scott's here, and just, once again, we don't want to do this. We don't, we don't want to do these projects. We understand the importance of the projects, but we shouldn't be forced to do these projects with diminishing returns, you know, so.
So every, every city, the federal government is making, have this...
Every community that has, excuse me, that does not have a separated stormwater and wastewater system is required to meet the more stringent...
And drains to the river, the creek.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
It's got to drain somewhere, though, so usually it's a river or wetland or whatever, but, yeah. So it's every, I mean, Logan's Port, Kokomo's doing it now.
What's the penalty for not getting it done in time?
Twenty-five thousand dollars a day, is what we were told. So...
Not even an option.
Right? I mean, if there was, we've been digging for years trying to find it, and there's just not. We petitioned, and they don't, they don't listen to that. I mean, every other community's in the same situation, and we would have liked to have done it differently, and we just, we have to be held, we're held to their standards, so.
And what's the completion date of it?
We have to have it complete by twenty thirty. It has to be tested. We have to know that it works, and we have to have the data to back that up by twenty thirty. So we would, we really want to have it done by twenty-eight. That gives us two years of rain data and treatment data, so that we know that it works. And for some odd reason, I mean, we're over-engineering this, but for some odd reason it doesn't work, we at least have a year's data to go in and say we need to make some changes and then make up for that by that twenty thirty. So twenty-eight's the goal. Twenty-seven would be better, but twenty-eight's the goal at this point. So that's why our, our rates are probably, like I said, what we're looking at, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, January one. And the first one looks somewhere, a, I'm going to write it down, I'm sorry.
Are there other communities that have had this done, that you can follow the rate studies and...
Different, every community's different. I think Logan's Port has to go under the river twice. We only have to go under one river, so, you know, their whole project's different, and their drainage is different. They should, they could have more percentage, a higher percentage of separate, separated part of the community already, or less. So every community's really different, and every community needs more or less storage, or more or less treatment, so it's really hard. I mean, our storage tank, our storage, whatever you want to call it, alone is twenty-six million dollars. That's the cost of an in-ground, open-top storage tank for six and a half million gallons by the wastewater. We own the land, it's by the wastewater plant, but, so just, I mean, however that other community does it, that's what their costs are. And we looked at four options, we looked at many, many options, but the four last options through the P E R, and this was the least expensive. The total separation wasn't even in the plan, because the first plan, it was already over a hundred and twenty million, and that was about six years ago, five years ago. The highest option was over a hundred million with different storage throughout the city, instead of just having one large storage and then inline storage for eight million gallons, and that's what we have to store. and that's what we have to store and process.
What's the timeframe on the job like, once you guys start it to finish?
Well, the first portion of what we'd call Phase 1 is the plant itself. There are a lot of upgrades that need to be done at the plant to be able to handle 26 million gallons a day. And we're looking at 60%, 60% completion of the final engineering by April, close on the loans, that portion of the loans. We're looking at probably 20 to 24 months for that completion. And in the meantime, we'll continue to engineer the large storage portion of the project, which is going to take two years to engineer, at least. And I think the cost of that, remember, 8 million? Jayman?
Engineering?
Yeah, for just, yeah, somewhere around 8 million dollars, just for the engineering for that project. And we're hoping to start that at the end of the plant project, because we have, we have to be able to process what we're pumping, if we, if we raise the amount of what we can store and pump, without being able to process it, then we're going to be, we're going to get fined for not, not being within their parameters. So, we're looking at, that one looks at like two years of engineering, and then two to three years of construction. Probably get it done in a year and a half, but no one here wants that, because we will have this town tore up from one end to the other, from the tennis courts to, to the wastewater plant. And we don't want to do that, we want to do it block by block by block.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you, Josh.
Do I have a motion to adopt?
Yeah, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 19-2023. Second.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Plotho.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell. Syadashni.
Yes.
Wolf.
No.
All right. Moving right along. Under new business, resolution September 19, 2023, resolution establishing rate-tracking factors for the municipal electric utility, City of Peru.
I'll make a motion to consider resolution.
Yeah, I put September, and that's my fault. I thought. Nineteen.
Resolution 19, is that right?
Yep, yep.
19, 2023.
Second. All right. Anderson.
Yeah, sorry.
Guston.
Yes.
Plotho.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Syadashni.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
All right, more good news, right? So this is the fourth quarter tracker, as we do every quarter. It's energy costs. It's not towards O and M, payroll, anything like that. It's strictly energy, straight pass-through from IMPA, our energy provider. The, the average decr, it's an average decrease over all of the rates by about 1,000th of a cent per kilowatt. So.
Well, you're heading in the right direction.
Well, yeah. I'd like to be like, like 10 cents a kilowatt in a decrease, but.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 19.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Plotho.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Syadashni.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
All right. Moving right along. Resolution number 18-2023, additional appropriation, City of Peru, Miami County, Indiana, where it's been determined that it's now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated on the annual budget of 2023, and be it ordained by the Peru City Council for the expense of taxing unit following additional sums of money hereby appropriated out of the Special Street and Sanitation CCIF Fund 2403, and for the purchase specifically and subject to laws governing the same, in the amount of $11,985.
I'll make a motion to consider resolution number 18-2023.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Plotho.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Syadashni.
Yes.
Wolf.
Do I have a motion to adopt?
Thank.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 18-2023.
Second.
Roll call.
Well, you want to have further discussion?
Okay.
Anybody have any more questions?
We're good.
I don't, I don't know if we specified that, that money we actually already have.
Right.
From the non-reverting, that we built up $145,000 in there?
Yeah, something like that, yeah. You're fine.
Any other questions or anything? All right.
Okay. Any questions? Nope. Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Plotho.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Syadashni.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
All right. Moving right along. Resolution number 18-2023.
No.
Nope, that's the same one, sorry.
Next page.
Ordinance number 20, 2023, ordinance to amend 151.067.
I'll make a motion to consider ordinance number 2023.
Second. Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Plotho.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Syadashni.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Is there somebody here to present on that?
They're discussing who wants to come up.
Welcome back, Haley.
Yes, I'm back. All right, the planning commission gave a favorable recommendation of seven to zero. And I'm sorry, I can't answer any questions, you'll have to direct them to Joe, because I wasn't here, so, I came at the end of it.
So, basically, you've amended this ordinance to say that we can't have any more self-storage facilities in the city.
You do self-storage.
Joe, would you come up, please? Got a beer in it, didn't you, Joe?
Is there a problem with there being too many, or?
I, like I said, I, I wasn't in full relief or anything, I just kind of presumed that at our.
In town, we already have eight self-storage units. They're not all full. We have another one going up, that's already applied for the permits and all that, so that would not affect this thing, going up over by Area 5, back over in there. We've got two just on the outside of the city limits, and within another two miles, we've got four more. We see a lot of progress going, and people are looking to buy property, to build houses and so forth. We'd like to see it stay that, at this point. Now, for existing self-storage places that have room on their property and want to put more units on their property itself, that's fine, but this would just be a moratorium against new self-storage units.
I have a question for Jim, Ted, please. Can you come up for a minute? If we, how would this affect economic development if we put a moratorium on new self-storage units? Do you think it?
You know, that's a difficult question. I mean, it's kind of like going back to the comment about, forgive me for bringing this up, and no, there's no new Dollar General stores coming, okay, to the community, but, you know, when you're telling someone who wants to, and again, I don't know all the background behind this at all, but you got, you have someone that wants to make capital investment, increase assessed value, and those kind of things, and I understand maybe the concern that maybe you have too many, or maybe some of those are not being maintained like they should, and maybe that's totally a different issue. But to kind of restrict investments, and again, I don't know the particulars, this is the first time I've heard about this. Someone won't make an investment, just kind of seems, kind of not in line with, with economic development. That's the same thing I tell people about Dollar General. I'm not making an investment, I haven't done the market analysis. You know, if someone like Dollar General wants to make another investment, spend a couple million in the community, go for it. They're the ones that are making the investment and paying the property taxes on it. But again, I don't know truly what the, what the issue, but on the surface.
Thank you.
It's, it's an amenity that goes with people living in the community.
It's investment, it's, yeah.
Those kind of things.
Assessed value improvement.
Sorry. No worries, no.
So Joe, what is the philosophy behind this?
We're running out of land here in the City of Peru, proper, and there's been other talks of people looking to put other housing developments and stuff like that in, so we're just looking along those lines. They want to go out into the county, which is very, very close, we're good with that, but in Peru proper, you know, we're just trying to keep it.
The only thing I didn't say on this, and I kind of go along with Jim, these are entrepreneurs that have built these things and come into our city. Is it right to tell anybody else, I can see putting regulations to work, they can't be in the housing district or anything like that. What I can't see is telling somebody, you're not allowed to build in Peru. This is a business. This is people making money off of the business.
We understand.
And that's where I have a problem with trying to be more concerned about.
I agree.
Whether or not they're allowed to build, rather than put restrictions on keeping them out of the residential areas.
Like a zoning issue, rather than a complete moratorium.
Well, when you look at this town, 90% of it is residential areas, and our, our business areas are getting less and less all the time.
But do we have a study on that, that shows that? I mean, are there statistics that show exactly what's lost, and, I mean, do you have that information?
No.
I don't want to set the precedence that we dictate what somebody does at their own property.
Fair enough.
They own it, I mean, like you said, we need residential, we need housing, but if I own a piece of property, and I don't want to build houses on it, and this is what I want to do because of the income, I don't want to get into that, we're going to start telling people what they can and can't do with their property.
I understand that. But we've also looked at the other cities around, and how they got choked with a lot of self-storage places and stuff, and we're just looking to not have that happen here. We are a small town, but we are growing rapidly.
Right. But with rapid growth, you need storage.
And there's the.
Right.
County, which is very close, where there's not a lot of building going on and stuff, we're just trying to preserve the inner workings of our city inside the city limits.
Right. And if you head to the county, they're going to say, we want farmland, we don't want anything put on it. Same scenario. So, I mean, forcing them into the county is not any better than them forcing them into town, saying they want to keep their farm ground, but build it in Peru.
Well, what I'm saying is, we have a small area here, we are growing. Every time you turn around, somebody wants to put up more apartments and stuff like that. We have a unique opportunity in this town right now, as Kokomo's out of housing, Wabash is low on housing, and we are the next step for the new battery plant, so on and so forth, and the other businesses that are coming around. So, just trying to keep this open for more housing and stuff like that. Something that will help everybody, and not just a certain group.
My concern.
That was our, that was our philosophy.
Yeah, my concern, too, is that there's no information to back, back this up. We don't have any, like, how much, how much, you know, is being taken, and, you know, what the plans are, so to put.
Let me see what you're actually asking. You want to know how many storage units we have that are empty in town?
No. No, because you, you're, one of your premises, as you said, that we're running out of land. And so I'd kind of like to either work with economic development, to help us understand that.
Have you driven around Peru to see how much open land we have inside the city itself?
I, I'd kind of like to, you know, have this tabled, and even if we're going to consider it, bring it back, and maybe get some input from the professionals, economic development, and then, if we're going to bring it back, then discuss that, but I just don't want to...
That's fine.
Yeah, I don't want to insult it, you know, our economic development, or like, what, Jim? Who are you, Steve?
Well, not only that, but it is also, before anyone builds any type of storage units or anything else, they have to come in to apply for permits.
Right.
And jump through hoops to do that. And just recently, I know we turned down one on North Broadway.
Right.
So, to me, this is not something that really needs to be done like this.
That's fine.
Because you can have remonstrators come in when somebody wants to build a storage unit. They turned one down on North Water Street, out by Harrison, a few years back. The guy bought that right across from Redmond, there was going to put in a storage unit. The people in the area remonstrated against it and got it denied. I just, I can't see big government telling the little guy, if he wanted to build a 20-unit storage barn somewhere, as long as it's not within, right in the middle of a residential area, to where somebody's going to remonstrate against it. You know, that's my feelings on it.
A lot of the last ones that were built are in residential areas, so we're just trying to make sure that we do the, we're an advisory board to the city council.
All right.
We go out there and we see what's going on, and we try to come up with the best solution for it. This is what we came up with. And not at any, you know, wasn't just on a whim, hey, let's get rid of storage units, and checked with other cities and so forth, and that's why we came up with this, so.
I would like to see, I mean, if we're really going to delve into this, I'd like to see what does the public, how do they feel about it? Let's give them a survey. Hey, this doesn't bother me. Next thing you're going to do is tell us you can't build garages or something. I'd like, Steve's.
I think that's taking a little too far.
Well, but I'm saying, why not do a survey and find out, how does the public feel about it? Are they, I mean, do the storage units bother you guys? I mean, more storage units?
I'm, I'm just, yes, I mean, no?
Yeah, but it's, it's.
I have, I have questions, is that okay?
Sure.
Joe, I appreciate you and what you do, thank you. What is this, I don't know if this means existing buildings, like how Big R was converted into a storage facility, would this prevent someone from doing that with a building they already own?
No, this is a new construction.
Okay. And so would this be, like, I'm thinking about how Bolt Storage came in and took over so much space, and there have been a lot of complaints in the community about how they've conducted their business, and I would love to see us have more of a voice in the city about someone coming in from the outside, making decisions that affect our city, and how we do business here, and they affect individual people who would rent these units, done with local conversation, instead of, well, we're in New York City, and this is how we do it, so.
Chris, you know, I asked, I think it was Dustin and Jim and Brooke, I think the first year we were in office, can we do an ordinance to where, you know, outside people can't come in, and, and that was, you know, so, but to your point, that would be the way that ideally, that the public should be involved in decisions. But I think it might go to, to you.
Haley.
Haley. Sorry. I think it'd go to the zoning, that, you know, where we could deal with this, and tighten the ordinances, but to tell somebody that, you know, bring in big government and say, you know, no.
Well, I don't know that I'd call it big government, we're just looking after our city.
Well, just needs to.
And that's our job, on the plan side.
Right, right.
Whether you guys adopt it or not, but if we didn't come up with plans like this, and research it and all that, then we wouldn't be doing our job.
Right. Stephanie's got a question?
I have a question. Who is it that's in charge of, like, when the Bolt Storage locations were owned locally, they were clean, they were groomed, the landscaping was well on it. Now, if you go to the one on the West End, there's one unit in particular that has a pink tricycle outside of it, there are flowers outside of it, it looks like what you would put in front of a home. The gates are open and unlocked, and it looks like, and I don't know, but it almost looks like someone is living in there. So who is responsible for policing those areas? Is it the building department, is it the code enforcement?
Code enforcement.
Who is it?
If they're violating code, that would be code enforcement.
Because I think that's the bigger issue. It's not the issue of someone building in our town. It's more about whether or not they're adhering to our standards and our ordinances if they have business here.
That's Rebecca, code enforcement. She's the code, you're the code enforcement officer, correct?
I'm the officer in more, but the administrator.
The administrator.
Anything else?
Wait, there's another one. Tim, go ahead.
Thank you, Joe.
Tim's got a question.
Yeah, I just, I'm, I'm with what it looks like most of you guys are saying. I think it should be zoning issue instead of, instead of just outright ban, that just doesn't make any sense to me. First, the whole big government thing, anybody that wants the government to do something doesn't think it's big government, but when the government does something, it's big government. That's the government telling people what they can and can't do, and that's what people have a problem with. I don't have anything in any storage units or anything like that, I don't want to invest in storage units, but I don't think you should be telling people you can and can't do this kind of thing with your property, in, in that regard, you can't have this kind of a business. If there's not enough call for storage units, they won't be being built, or they'll start going out of business, self, self-limiting eventually. So, you know, don't have around, zone it for industrial areas or something like that, that's great, fine, but I don't think outright ban makes any sense.
Anybody else have a comment before we put it to a vote?
Do you want to have a motion to table, or do you want to have a motion to deny?
I'd like to make a motion to table. I, I think we need a little more discussion, personally.
Second.
Mark.
Okay.
It's been moved in second to table ordinance 20, 2023. Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Ploto?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Si Dushni?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Tabled.
Could, would the planning commission maybe get with economic development, and could you guys do that, maybe talk about that, Jim, or is that something?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, all right. And come back next, next in October?
All right, moving right along. Ordinance number 21 dash 2023, under ordinance to amend 151.080 C 10 dash 12.
I'll make a motion to consider ordinance number 21, 2023.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Ploto?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Si Dushni?
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
So the planning commission has also given a favorable recommendation of seven to zero.
The change is being, so people can hear this.
From what I understand and have read through it, it's to remove the word sidewalk in where you can put the sidewalk, or the fence right up against the sidewalk, so there's not that extra strip that they have to come outside of their fence to mow. And there will also be permit, people will need to get permits for their fences.
For fences?
Yes.
What was the, what would be the fee for the permit in this case?
Um, I don't believe they have a fee.
We weren't asking for a fee, we just wanted permit, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. We've had several contractors build fences in town lately, and six-foot fence in the front yard, not adhering to them. So this way, at least, if they come in to get the permit before you're not, we explain everything to them and just make sure that everything's kept level.
Okay.
What if they don't come to get a permit?
Then they're in violation.
Then you just tell them to start over and take it all out?
Or we can go back and look at it. These contractors really need to learn what our ordinances are instead. And one of the contractors who built this has been working in this town for years, and because the customer wanted the six-foot fence in front, he built it anyways, knowing that it would probably be a problem. This is ridiculous. So.
Joe, what is the reason for no more than four foot in front of your property?
That's, that's been ordinance that's been on there for years. We really don't know where that came from. Nobody seems, the fire department and police department don't seem to have a problem with it, but just keeps from blocking the houses from you and so forth.
Because the reason I, reason I ask that, I'm familiar with the case down here on North Huntington, or South Huntington by Third Street. One of our police officers lived between Third and Second. He built a fence in his side yard and everything, and this was prior administration, went up to him and said, you can't have over four foot high in front of your house, you got to take it down. He took it down to four foot, and the neighbor right across the street built one eight foot all the way down through there. He asked about that, the front of their house is on Third Street, not, it didn't include the side.
It was the side of the house.
So, but where he had built his, he was right on an alley, and he went from the side of his house to his property line at eight foot, and then back, and they had to change it. So maybe we ought to take a look at all of this and see about certain circumstances and stuff to where that can be adapted to, because that's, by what you're, what this is right now, if you look at my fence in front of my house, it's not in front of my house.
That's right.
My house faces the street, however, it's a front yard that I've got a six-foot fence all the way around it.
We know that there's a lot of properties in this town that are strange, you know, where what people consider the front of the house is technically the side of their house the way it is, and if they have, have an issue, they can always come to the Board of Zoning Appeals. We take it on a case-by-case basis.
Are you suggesting, Mayor Hewitt, that we table it and look at it through the next four weeks or three weeks, or what, what are you suggesting?
If that's what you want to do, it's totally up to you guys.
But are, would you like to do that before we pass? I mean, is that something you would be interested in us doing?
I would, I would like to see it studied more, to where we would be sure that we wouldn't have to go to Board of Zoning Appeals or anything, that we can adjust our ordinance to where it can be fair for everyone without arbitrarily taking this one, this one, and this one. And I understand what Joe's saying too, but the only thing is, it, it gives this, this gentleman a bad taste because his neighbor, just because his address came off of Third Street, could build a whole thing down the side of his house and hide his, hide his whole house instead of having to come down to four feet, when he was beside his house and completed for his kids to play in. And I don't know if you know anything about kids or not, but four foot's nothing for a kid. I mean, they, they climb higher than that just to get in a tree, so.
Tim, go ahead.
Well, it sounds like we don't even know why there's an ordinance limiting this, this height of the fence.
It's in state codes.
It's in the state codes? Okay. Well, if it's a state, then I guess not much you can do about it, but it just seems kind of strange to be adding extra enforcement mechanisms to something you don't even know why it's in place in Peru.
Dustin, we can, we can differentiate between state codes, can't we?
You can, you can go, it depends on the situation, you can sometimes enforce more, but if this, it's hard to say, state by state, obviously the home rule effect, if the state hasn't, hasn't spoken to it, we can speak on it. I'll use side road, for instance, minimum speed set by the state, however, we can lower the speed limit to what we want our side streets. I would have to read the state code specifically to know if we can make it higher than four foot, or if we have the authority to go down to like three foot or whatnot, but I would have to see the intent of the statute. I have.
I make a motion that we table this resolution.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Ploto?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Si Dushni?
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
And I do want to tell Joe and the board and everything, I do thank you for the amount of work you put in and the work you do.
Thank you, Matt. Board appreciates you.
All right, moving right along, presentation by American Structure Point with an update on the retail gap analysis.
Evening, everybody.
He has a presentation gap accord.
Last time there was like a broadcast.
Right here.
Coming up.
Well, while they're getting this set up, I'll go ahead and introduce our speaker tonight. Again, I'm Brooke Robertson with Miami County Economic Development, and a few months ago, we had a discussion with the mayor about talking about retail and bringing retail to our community. I believe the mayor had had a discussion with the mayor of Crawfordsville, and Peru and Crawfordsville have a lot of similarities, and the mayor recognized that and asked us if we would consider doing what they had done, and recommended American Structure Point, and brought the name of Matt to us. And so we started meeting a lot about six, eight months ago to do this new city of Peru retail gap analysis that Matt will give you the update on here in a minute as soon as he gets the presentation going for you. But it's not a really long presentation, I promise, because we know you've got budget stuff after this. But if you have any questions for myself, or Matt, or Jim's back here too.
Yep, my, uh, thank you for that great introduction, Brooke. It's great to see everybody again. Happy you back here, while the presentation's getting booted up.
Have come through.
Matt?
Yes, sir.
Could you pull that mic up so we can hear you?
I am sorry, is that better?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Do we need to do the screen share?
You should show up there.
The interest of, of time, while we're working on the technical pieces, I'll give the, the quick intro. Myself, my name is Matthew O'Rourke, I am the Planning and Economic Development Manager for American Structure Point. Oh, I think I just saw it.
Hey.
All right, so moving right into it, what, what we're going to talk tonight about is our gap analysis that we performed for the city of Peru. Going to talk you through kind of the key highlights of the, the report. It's a bigger report, so we're not going to talk through every little detail of it, but want to hit the highlights of what we saw about the community, what we heard from our focus group stakeholder meetings, and then also the actual retail gap data itself. I just started talking about this, the, the rest of the, my introduction is, I was in local government for 15 years, economic development, planning, zoning, all those things. In Illinois, retail is a very big part of the economy because home rule communities can charge their own sales tax, so I had to get really adept at learning how to talk to retailers and learning, that's how I got into this type of analysis in the first place. So, our process overall, we were here at the beginning of, of this, kind of kicked it off, went through sort of a high level, what is a retail gap analysis? Since that time, we've been working away, getting the data, having our focus group meetings, and then here we are tonight, sort of bookending the process, present it for feedback, see if there's any questions, and if there's anything else we can do before we finalize that report, and turn in that, that last draft of it. Just want to throw out there, at any point in time, please feel free to interrupt me if you have a question. I'm happy to, to stop. We don't have to get all the way to the end if there's something you're just really dying for me to dig into a little bit more. Uh, so the first, the first part of our analysis is always what we call Peru Today. It's looking at existing population counts, housing trends, those sorts of things, looking for anything we might need to have in there, just so that staff, when they're talking to retailers, at least knows what the data is. Generally speaking, this is the same data a retailer will look at for a community before they come looking around, and so even if it's not the data you want to hear, it's good to know it so you have an answer for it. So that, that's a big part of this, is learning how to kind of talk through these developments and sites like a developer would, or a retail broker would. So the first thing we do is, is look at the trade area in terms of population. Peru's population has shown a little bit of a decrease over the last 10 years, from 2010 to 2020, both censuses, about 500 people. It's important to know this and what's going on in the, in the area, because retailers generally like to see population growth, and so we, we wanted to make sure we highlighted this for everyone tonight, and on the next slide, I can show you that, you know, if that trend line continues, which I know there's other units being talked about under development that might reverse this, the, the total decline in population was not that high, so reversing this trend wouldn't be too hard. It just takes, you know, you got to think through that and your policies and how you want to do that, but retailers are very interested in this. They want to, they want to see population increases, not decreases, generally speaking. And so that, that was a very important part of what we found in the trend lines. Another thing we looked at was the rental versus homeownership mix. There's more homeowners in Peru than there are renters, which this is pretty typical. Didn't see anything in the data that, that really said Peru is, you know, one way or the other compared to other communities, but retailers like to know this too, because the, certain types of retailers favor homeowners, like home equipment supply stores, obviously. Renters that maybe have a little more disposable income want to go to a restaurant more often. So it's good to know what's out there, just so the retailers can see that and that they have that, that background information. One other one, we just kind of wanted to look at what goes on during the day. So what this side shows is not only the population of residents, but what happens during the day. So actually, Peru's daytime population, which includes folks that are, probably live here, maybe they work in the community and live here, or they stay at home during the day, plus all the workers that come in from other places. So the population actually swells a little bit during the daytime, which is a good thing. It means you have more customers in the area for retailers to capture, maybe that lunch crowd, or grocers on the way home, you need to stop and get that thing of milk for your kid, because he's dying to have a bowl of cereal for dinner, at least that's how mine works. This map just kind of represents that in a little bit different way. It shows that the green arrow is how many people come into work, the really light colored arrow to the right is how many people live in Peru, would go somewhere else to work, and that circle in the middle is live and work in Peru. It was a pretty even mix. It wasn't quite 50/50, but it was close, which is actually much better than we see in a lot of communities. Other communities, we do this, and you could see 70, 80. The highest I've ever had is in Ohio, where it was 98% of workers come in from out of town. And so this, this shows that there's a good population mix during the day and at night, which is really good to see. It's really, it's something that, when we talk about traffic counts and who's coming into the town, that's really a big thing for retailers. Focus groups, I'll go through this pretty quickly, but we did sit down, we had a whole day of, of sessions with focus groups, so these were business owners, representatives from the Chamber of Commerce, Economic Development downtown, talked through things, and we like to do this to marry it with the data, so that we can see if what we're seeing in the data jives with what business owners and local economic development folks represent, and this is what we heard. Events attract people, the daytime population helps, like to see a little more variety maybe in the, the business mix in terms of, this got really specific with restaurants, we, we heard that really folks would like to see more sit-down restaurants and have different types. types of cuisines. Amenities and atmosphere in downtown, all the business owners we talked to said how much they liked that about Peru. It brings people in, they come to the festivals, they come to the different events. So that's a really big driver of business for a lot of the folks we talked to. They really like the coordination, the communication between the event organizers and business owners, really feel supported, I think, is the best takeaway I heard. Business owners here, especially local entrepreneurs, are doing really well and they really like being in Peru. So that might be something to build off of. Oftentimes, if the data isn't set up right for a national retailer to come in, there's sometimes a local entrepreneur, we can help fit that. So as you go through this data and folks start coming up with policy direction, that might be one thing to think through. So the real key to this, the gap analysis, the gap data, just a quick refresher, when you do an effort like this, it looks at how many people live in an area and how much they spend on goods and then how much is being spent in the area. When it comes out something called a leakage, it means people that live in your community, you're going somewhere else to buy their stuff, or in the trade area in this case. So again, this is an important one. Leakages are generally what we do to identify potential growth markets. A surplus is the inverse of that. It means there's more money coming into the community in certain business categories than is leaving, which basically, that can be a variety of reasons. It's, I think the instinct is to look at that as a bad thing, but I don't think it is, especially, it just means more people are coming in. That could be that daytime population, the workers, they're spending money here, too. And so that's capturing it. It just means we have to think about the market in a little bit different way. So here's the trade areas, working with staff and after our focus group meetings, looked at this and said, a lot of people come here from pretty far out. So that red area, well, we looked at the city of Peru corporate limits. That red area sort of on top of the green represents how far you can get in 20 minutes by a drive. The lighter green underneath it is a 25-minute drive. And it really turned out that people are coming to Peru for a variety of reasons during the week and the weekends, for various events or the circus or any of those things. You're tracking from a really big area, which was a little surprising for me. I've done this in a lot of communities and you don't necessarily see this big of a draw for a community of similar size as Peru, around 10,000 or 11,000 people. So with that, I'm not going to go through all these numbers. This is what the gap analysis looks like when I get it from the data servers where we buy it from. It has all these different business categories. This one is the city limits, the primary trade area, which is that 20-minute drive, and then the extended trade area, which is that bigger 25-minute drive. I think the bigger difference between those two columns on the right, primary trade areas, you expect people to maybe shop one to two to three times at your businesses during a week. Extended area is more your visitors. Those are the folks coming in town just on the weekends for an event, something like that. You're probably relying on them more one or two times a month.
And the red was our deficit? The red was our deficit?
So, yeah, the one true surplus category was gasoline stations.
Okay.
There's more people spending money on gas in the area than that. I have another slide on that, but that's a great question. And then we had one mixed bag one, which we'll get into, which is food and beverage stores. Those are grocery stores, generally speaking, specialty grocery items, that kind of stuff. So the total leakage in all these areas was actually really big, 200 million in just Peru alone. And then as you go out, that gets bigger. It's great to see a leakage. It means there's a lot of opportunity here. But wanted to dive into this a little bit more. The first thing, I only have the one example here, but the first thing I wanted to call attention to is this category called non-store retailers. That shows up in that big number, but really this is like online buying, people that are selling on eBay, that kind of stuff. So immediately, 66 million of that, of the leakage, is kind of taken out. The other, so, and I wanted to show this as the one true surplus, basically, more people are buying gas in the area than just the residential population, which it doesn't surprise me that highway access to 3124, you know, that just makes sense. The other big chunk of that overall leakage that we found was motor vehicle dealerships, parts and such. Basically, a car costs a lot, so that generally creates a big, big number. And there's car dealers here, but not every brand that you would think of. So there's a bit of a leakage there and somewhat of a market opportunity, what we found. We also looked at food and beverage stores. I wanted to highlight this one only because it was a bit of an oddball. There's more groceries in Peru than maybe just the residents are buying, so people are coming from outside Peru to get groceries here. But then when we looked at the primary and extended trade areas, that number inverted, which means Peru residents are getting their needs met. And, you know, we have Kroger, we have Aldi, but folks just outside the city could use more grocery options. Generally speaking, a grocery store, depending on the size, will bring in 10 to 15, 20 million in sales a year. A really, really big one is probably closer to 50. So there's, there might be room here for that if that's the route you want to go. But it would be really surviving on those one- to-two-month type visitors, not necessarily everyday visitors, and grocers don't always prefer that. The next one, and we heard about this from our focus group participants, there's not a lot of clothing options, place to buy clothes. The numbers clearly back that up. There's a leakage in all three areas. Same with health and personal care stores. This is your Walgreens, CVSs, pharmacies, places like that. Alta would probably be in that mix, too. There's not a lot of those in the area, so there's a market opportunity for theirs as well. One final one, dig into a little bit, food, service, and drinking places. These are restaurants. The gap analysis comes to us and they break it down by types of restaurant, too. And so we dug into this a little bit more and found that full-service restaurants, there's a really good number here. And so that's just one more thing that backs up what we heard from our focus group participants, that there is a lot of market opportunity here for more sit-down restaurants. Really, more restaurants of every type, we found out, but I wanted to highlight this one since that's what we heard a lot about. The market's here, there's residents that want to go out and eat, so we just start thinking through how to do that. Also, what we like to do, so this becomes a little more tangible, especially for staff, is we'll kind of look at average sales per square foot for these different categories where we found the high leakages and walk through what that means in terms of square footage based on their sales per square foot. So when we went through the whole exercise, you look at this and say, you know, it could almost be 380 some odd thousand worth of new retail growth. That's what the capacity of the market is. Now, some of that won't get absorbed. You notice the last column on the right, we'd like to factor in e-commerce. So we take the original number and backed off about 13% of that square footage only because that's what the BLS says is the current sale or share of online sales and retail markets. So that's why that last column's there and the numbers look a little lower. One other one I wanted to highlight, the word, like, a bigger store like Meyer came up a lot in this analysis. People wanted to know about that. What we found is in the immediate area, there's a bit of a leakage there, probably not enough to just for a store like that, 30, they're closer to the 50, $60 million in sales a year. It's close. And if you look at some of the other categories, clothing, food, I think maybe if you start to add those up, you might be able to create that market, you might be able to say it. But it's going to be, it's going to take a lot of work. It's not, this isn't a natural fit for an outfit like that. So they're going to need some other reasons and explanation. And that's a good thing. If you want to market to these folks, you just need to know that and you can prepare your materials and really start focusing your story on why this is a great market besides the numbers. Daytime population, I'd build in there. Our numbers, these gap analysis, don't include anything on daytime population spending. So that's part of the story. The high traffic volumes would be another part of the story. But in particular, we kind of wanted to break this down and just show where some existing Meyers were recently built and just compare Peru's trade areas to those. So we kind of did it within a 10-minute drive just to make it nice and even for everybody. And so this just kind of confirms that same thing we were just talking about, is the numbers in Peru aren't quite where they are in other places. So there needs to be some thought behind how that's marketed. The other thing I would say for any of these categories is new rooftops automatically mean more demand, more disposable income. And I mentioned this earlier when we were talking about population, retailers like to see growing communities. They know there's a new market coming. So that's another, it's not quite the policies we're talking about, but certainly is another piece to this, you know, new rooftops equal new spending. The other couple of things that we did in the report, we looked at all the commercial areas and sort of cataloged everything that's out there. The reason we did this is just so you know, had a good inventory of what's going on in the community. So if you chase similar types of businesses, you know you're looking for a little bit of an offset there. So we went through and categorized all the areas. I'm not going to walk through them all tonight. Just wanted to highlight that this is in the report, once everybody gets a chance to really dive into it and read through it. And we kind of looked at location advantages and disadvantages for each one. In this case, you know, we talked about it, the proximity to residential land is really great, it's got good traffic. On the other hand, you know, homes to the east, kind of limit expansion of the Kroger area. We heard a lot about that, that Kroger has that lot, but they're sort of hemmed in, so if they ever want to expand, it might be tough for them. And so we walked through all those things and highlighted them as part of the report. And that's really kind of the general overview of the report, you know, it's all about existing data and finding out that gap analysis. I'd be happy to take any questions.
One takeaway, one takeaway I see is that growth is needed, right? Is that kind of what we're seeing?
Yeah. If you, depending on the type of retailers you're trying to attract.
Right.
Yeah. Like if, that's why we went through the Meyer example. If you're looking for that level of, that size, I should say, square footage of a retailer, then yeah. I think that would, it would certainly help make the case that if there was more residential growth going on to help supplement that. And that, that's kind of rooftops equal retail. I mean, that's been an adage that's been around for a long time.
When will we receive a final copy of?
We're working through reviewing it with Jim and Brooke. Based on, unless there's anything you're seeing tonight that, you know, that you like cause a red flag, we'll go ahead and finalize that and I think it'll be ready to distribute.
I just wanted to add one thing if I could. When we were talking about our potential and economic outlook, especially what a lot of the things that are happening in this region, our opportunity to gain population, you know, go back to what Matt was talking about, rooftops, disposable income in a trade area equal more retail development. So when we're here talking about developing housing and different types of housing, we have to have that type of development to meet what the market's looking for. So a lot of these new workers coming in, Samsung or suppliers that are already looking at our community, or people that are looking at Plant Two, Schneider, Seventh Street, or all that. The more housing, the opportunities we have for these people, that's the way that we grow population, to make that forecast go upwards, but then also helps us qualify for more retail as well.
So you guys are already, Economic Development's already talking about the Ready Grant, correct?
We are, and we just completed the housing study, which we're going to review on here in the next couple of months, that shows the amount of new single-family homes that could be absorbed into our local economy over five years.
So is the Ready Grant, as far as your estimate, is addressing this?
We're going to be looking for, part of that grant application is going to include water and sewer.
Okay.
To go into new single-family home development sites.
All right.
If I could just add to Jim's comments, I think what we heard from our focus group meetings, what we've seen with our own eyes is Peru's a really attractive, great place to want to locate, whether it be homes or retail. So, yeah, it's, I think all the amenities are here. It's just, it's about, you know, making that, taking that next step and making that happen with all the other growth opportunities in the area.
We'll send individual copies, soon as we can finally send individual copies to the mayor and city council, and we'll also have it posted on our website.
Matt, you went too quick. I didn't get your phone number.
Oh, I am sorry. It's area code 513-307-9964.
Thank you.
And also, I'd like to thank Matt and his staff for doing a great job. And again, this is a living document, so, you know, it'll take updating, constantly reviewing as things change, circumstances change, population increases, provides us more opportunities, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right. Moving right along, resolution number 20-2023 for appropriation and tax rate, state form 55865715, approved by State Board of Accounts, 2015, prescribed by Department of Local Government Finance Budget Form Number Four.
I'll make a motion to consider resolution number 202023.
Second. Roll call. Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Lutho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Cyadashni?
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
So Kurt, I've asked, Sandy Chinum tried to explain this to me, and I'm a little bit confused on exactly, are you the one who understands what this is?
Spans, what is the budget?
What the resolution, oh, this is the budget?
This is the budget.
Okay, because I was told from somebody else.
No, no, this is the budget.
Okay.
And we're just saying, I didn't, that's the resolution that comes from the State Board of Accounts. I took it right off of the gate, right off a gateway.
Right, okay.
Put it right here. That is the, that's what you have to have for the budget.
All right. I was, yeah, I was giving inaccurate information, so, thank you. So, that's it, I didn't give you the right information again.
This basically establishes our budget and establishes the property tax rate that will be advertised for next.
Yeah, okay, that's how it got.
And everything according to, everything according to Baker Tilly was right.
Spot on.
Spot on.
And the wage ordinance is going to be sometime?
The wage ordinance, she said, as I sent you that paper today, Amber said it can be anywhere between now and December 31st. But the budget is based on the wages that are included in there.
Right.
Yes.
Mayor Hewitt, I have only one suggestion as far as wages go. Kelly, how long have you worked for the city?
Almost 10 years now.
How long have you been the director of the Department of Aviation?
Since 94, 2014 now.
Okay. Kelly, right now, is the lowest-paid department head by quite a bit. And last year, you didn't get a raise. And now he's, I would just encourage you, Mayor Hewitt, to maybe meet with him and the Aviation Board. And before the wage ordinances set, you maybe look at that with him. That's a lot of service and he's in charge of a lot of equipment and property. And I just want to say that on your behalf, that you're doing a wonderful job as far as keeping everything secure. And I think that, I think it would be good for the Aviation Board to kind of come up with some new innovation and ways to increase revenue, but that's kind of their responsibility.
Well, everybody, every department head, regardless of where, deserves more money. Kurt and I looked at the budget and everything, and this is what we felt was fair. And there again, I'd like to give a police and fire 10%, but we can't do it.
Right.
Because we can't bankrupt the city for certain individuals to get a decent raise that they deserve. And I do know that they deserve it, so.
He's just like $10,000 behind every other department head, so.
Every department head has a different responsibility, too. And, you know, at this time, unless Kurt and I could find additional money, I'm sticking by what we have done.
I just wanted to voice my concern for Kelly.
Because I don't think last year you even got a raise.
He didn't last year.
So, and that's why this year, we come up with what we did.
I appreciate everybody's help, too, on that.
Right. So, you know.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I can't, if I can't pull money out of this, I don't have it to give over here.
And Mayor, I don't know that disparity, the disparity of pay happened on your watch. So I just, you know, it's just pretty big, so.
Having looked through all the numbers and everything, I think it's, I think you guys did a good job. It seems very balanced to me. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 20.
We can.
You can't, you can't adopt yet.
This is just a first reading.
We're just considering.
What is going to consider?
Yeah. You have to have two separate meetings. This is the first one, the second one will be next.
So I'll make a motion to... So I'll make a motion that we consider.
We've already, it's been considered.
Already done that.
Considered, we're fine. We're just done until, until October. This was an opportunity for you folks to review, to review the budget, see where we came, went, see where we, see where the numbers came from, how they came out. Our cash balances are still sufficient.
Thanks.
Baker Tilly has told me that over the years, we have done a really good job of retaining cash, so that we don't have an issue. But it's been to the detriment of infrastructure, vehicles, buildings, things like that. Well, with the ARP funds that we received, it's just about going to make everything, everything whole. Civic Center is basically taken care of. Animal Control is basically taken care of. The airport will be taken care of. So there are not a lot, I mean, the fire department's got their, their equipment, their new building. The police department's got their cameras, their cars, their, things like that. So with the 800-plus of $1,000 that we have for next year, things should be in pretty good shape. As I said, the one advantage, I know everybody who is out trying to buy a house right now, if they have to do that, they have to pay a lot more for mortgage. Credit cards are higher. But one of the advantages of it is that our cash balance in our checking account is allowing us to earn some pretty good interest. So that's extra money that comes in to help balance the budget. And so there is nothing wrong with the city's finances. There is nothing wrong with the city budget. I, you know, I've been in here eight months, and all I heard was, you know, well, the city's got this problem, the city's got that problem. We don't have the issue. We really don't. We're, as you can see by the, by the finance, by the, by the reserves that Baker Tilly presented to you, it's in good shape.
Did they plug your new numbers into the five-year plan?
They did not redo a new five-year plan, no. The five-year, no, they did not redo a new five-year plan this year. We can probably ask them for one, but they did not, they did not do that.
Right. Like, I don't want like a whole five-year plan. I'm just saying, like, instead of the projected numbers, like, put the actual numbers in, so we'd have a better idea. Because when they did that first last year, it did show a $1.2 million decrease by 2025.
Well, one of the things that changed when they did that five-year plan was they estimated we were going to get $25,000 a year interest income. We're way over that. So that smooths all that out, big time.
We're getting that a month now, aren't we?
More than that, a month, yes. Plus, and I will tell you, that we received a check from the Internal Revenue Service for $750,000 a week ago. This is a mistake that I found that was done by the prior payroll clerk. She had overpaid the withholding taxes considerably. So we received a check and we deposited in the bank today for $750,000, including $63,000 of the interest.
How much was that?
But I found that.
How much was that again?
Pete.
Three quarters, three quarters of a million.
And the payroll clerk?
She had, what we do is, we pay the payroll taxes for the city and the utilities.
Right.
So we add our withholding to the utilities withholding and electronically transfer that in. For some unknown reason, back in 2021, she took the payroll withholding, added it to the utilities gross payroll, and sent that in. So we were paying 70,000, 70,000, 70,000, 225, 225. I found it.
Way to go, Kurt.
And I got the money back for us.
Which keeps us from being bleak next year.
Just, it's just numbers, and those are easy for me, so.
Any other discussions?
Seriously, Kurt, that's cool.
Anything under communications? If not, we're up for adjournment. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Pete?
Aye.
All in favor, aye.